All right. Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the September 2024 hearing of the Oldham County Planning and Zoning Commission. Before we get underway, would everybody please join me in saying the pledge?
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. And at this time, everyone, please also join me in silencing those electronics for the duration of the hearing. Thank you very much. The first order of business will be approval of minutes. Can we go ahead and get a motion on the floor?
Move to approve the minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Marsh. Mr. Hampton, is that your second? Thank you. All right. Corrections, edits. Mr. Hampton.
On the first page, my first name is spelled with an E.
I feel your pain, sir.
Anything else, Mr. Hampton? All right, anyone else? All right, we'll go ahead and with a voice vote. Yes, ma'am. Oh, excuse me, please.
The votes, she's gonna go back and listen to the tapes again, but I think the votes on docket PZ 24-
016 on page 13 of 14. I don't think those votes are correct, but she's gonna check on it.
Thank you, Ms. Kraus. All right.
Thank you.
So... After reviewing, we'll allow staff to update according to what the record says. Otherwise, anyone else with changes, edits, updates, voice vote then, all signified by saying aye in approval. All opposed like sign. And the minutes are approved. All right, move into the first docket. Ms. Edgar, are you ready? Let's go ahead and swear staff, please. Thank you.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you. Docket PZ 24-018, an application for a waiver to allow residential use in an industrial zone district for property located at 2616 Singleton Lane, LaGrange. The zoning is I-2 heavy industrial district.
Good morning, Anna Barge, Senior Planner. Anna Barge, if I haven't met any of y'all yet. So this morning, we have a waiver for residential use in an industrial zone district located at 2616 Singleton Lane in LaGrange. It's about six minutes away from here. The application has been filed by Kathy and Gary Hardy for the approval of the waiver for proposed residential building in Heavy Industrial District. Like I said, the property is located at 2616 Singleton Lane and is zoned I-2 heavy industrial. It's currently undeveloped and it is almost 41 acres, that 40.9. So site history, on April 10th, 2024, staff approved a minor plat for the lot, track two, to create the 40.9 acre lot. So for the case history, it was posted to the county website on August 28th, 2024, and adjoining property owner notices were mailed on September 9th. The public notice appeared in the old mirror a little bit earlier because of our next item on the agenda that has to go out. It has a requirement to be posted a little bit earlier, so that's why the public notice was a little bit earlier than normal. So as you can see, the lot is outlined in red there for the specific lot that we're looking at for today. So all that in purple is zoned I-2. Up to the west and the north is AG1, and then that SWF1 is solid waste facility, and that is that metal recycling place over there on Highway 146. And then in the bottom southeast corner is an I-1 lot. So I went down there and took some pictures. This is, if you're looking down the road with the direction that the arrow is in, and the driveway to the property is to the left, and this is straight on looking on the property. And then this is looking the opposite direction. I'm gonna go back. As you can see, the road is one lane road, which was also mentioned in the applicant's justification. So the current property, as you can see, is undeveloped, and the applicant is requesting a waiver to be able to put a residential building on their 40.9 acre property. It's currently zoned I-2 heavy industrial, and the current zoning does not allow residential usage. There are several adjacent properties that are also zoned I-2 that include residential buildings, and I'll show you that. So everywhere where there's that blue arrow is where there's a house on a property that's zoned I-2 in neighboring properties. So as you can see, it's one, two, three, four, five different properties nearby. So this is the plat that was created. And this is to show that for I-2 heavy industrial that there's no standard allowances under the permitted uses or the conditional uses for residential, which is why they're requesting a waiver. And so since this is kind of unusual, I decided to look up some previous somewhat similar cases, and this is kind of as similar as I could get. In 2016, there was an application for residential use waiver to allow residential use in a commercially zoned district in Westport, and it was approved because Planning Commission felt like strict compliance with regulations would create undue hardship, and then like other properties in the immediate vicinity uses as proposed are compatible with the nearby properties consisting of commercial and residential use. And under the unique conditions that exist in the Westport area, that is a commonplace type of arrangement and does not present as an outlier as far as that application was concerned. So, and there was also one at 6323 Highway 329 in Crestwood, and they approved for the reasons listed in the minutes as there were unique conditions such as topographic or man-made features, and the design innovations of the project would achieve basic objectives of the regulations. So in summary, they're requesting a waiver for residential use in industrial district. Potential conditions of the approval would be that the waiver shall only apply to the plan reviewed at the September 24th, 2024 Planning Commission Public Hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Barge. Is that in staff's presentation? Very well. All right, commissioners, questions for staff? All right, you're off the hook.
Okay.
We'll move into presentation from applicant. Let's get your name, address, get you sworn, please.
It is Gary Hardy, 3097 Old Westport Road, LaGrange.
And if you'll raise your right hand.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
All right, floor is yours.
I bought this property a few months ago. After spending about almost 50 years behind a desk, I picked up a weird hobby. I like to drive a skid loader, so I've, this is the second project that I've played with, with pushing out trees and cleaning up property. I bought this tract just to have a place to play. The intent on it would be to have a backup place if I ever did want to move, but at this point, we have no desire to move. I have listed the property, since there's very little property out there for sale right now. I thought if somebody else wanted it, then that would be fine. But that's, no other plans, there's no plans to split it. And I didn't do the minor plat, I wanted to clarify that. The previous owner did the minor plating. I bought it as one track and planned to keep it as one track if, obviously, it would be five years before anybody could split it or else get a waiver in order to look at dividing it. But the way the road is, it's a single lane road. As far as industrial zoning, you could never get a semi back there. If one pulled in back there, they'd never get back out. And then it's, the best use of it is residential or recreation, and so that's what I'm doing.
All right. Anything else to add?
No, sir.
All right, we're gonna go through a little bit of procedure here, and then we'll circle back to you, okay?
Okay.
All right, so is anyone else here wishing to speak in favor of this application? All right, seeing none, we'll move into questions from commission. Anyone have questions? Mr. Hardy, Mr. Falvey. Mr. Hardy, will you come back to the podium, please?
Do you intend to put a house on immediately, or just?
No, sir. I just want to have the ability to do that, or if I sell it, if somebody else wanted to put a house on it, they would have that ability.
All right, thanks.
All right, additional questions? Mr. Klingenfuss.
Is this for one house or multiple houses in the future?
It would be for one house.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else? Mr. Finney, please.
Are there utilities, air, water, gas, electric available?
The water, I've been told, is on my side of the road, and then the electric and all runs down the right-hand side of the road on poles. So yes, the utilities are there. And when the Fuller's applied for the minor plat, I believe part of that process verifies all the utilities being there as well.
Is the right-of-way to the property restricted by property owners, or is this, or in other words, why is the right-of-way so narrow?
That, as far as the single lane road?
Yes, sir.
I'm not sure. That road has been there until I bought the property. I had never driven down Singleton Lane. So I'm not sure why it's, it is so narrow, but I don't think, I did speak with Jim Silliman, and there's no plans to widen the road.
Okay, thank you.
All right, other questions? Ms. Jones.
What is the reason for doing this now instead of if you planned in five years to build a house, or if you sold it and the new owners, you know, wanted to do something different with it, why wouldn't they come here? Why do this now?
I did go on and list the property in the event that somebody would want to build a house on it, and the real estate agent recommended that it get approved for a house, for a structure there. And so that was the reason for doing that.
You're good. I'll just put it on where the-
There you go. Sorry about that. Was that?
Ms. Jones, anything else? Okay, questions from anyone else? All right, seeing none, we'll circle back in just a minute here. Without opposition, we'll dispense with cross-examine rebuttal and testimony from, of course, those opposed. So anything else from the commission before we move into final statement? From Mr. Hardy. Mr. Hardy, one more time.
Okay.
Anything additional to add?
I do not, no, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Hampton, anything? No, I'm sorry, Mr. Baxter.
No.
All right. All right, so guys, we are at decision-making time. Mr. Fisher, can you flesh this out for us, please?
Yes. So you've heard evidence and testimony on page two, the backside of the first page of your staff report. You do have suggested motions for approval and denial of the waiver. And the only proposed condition of approval would be that the waiver shall only apply to the plan reviewed at the September 24th, 2024 Planning Commission Public Hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. All right, commissioners. So the floor will be open for a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Marsh.
In regards to docket PZ 24018, the application for residential building in Heavy Industrial District, I move to deny the application. I feel it's not congruent with the Oldham County Comprehensive Plan, does not provide or support economic growth, or provides significant betterment for the county, community, or the neighborhood. And I saw no significant hardship by the applicant being established.
Mr. Baxter, do we have?
You have an adequate motion, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
A second.
Ms. Davis. All right, commissioners, discussion? Seeing none, we'll move into a roll call vote. Remember, this is a motion to deny, so a motion, or a vote in favor of the motion is a vote to deny. Everyone clear? Okay? Ready?
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Elder?
No.
Ms. Kraus?
Can, Chairman, can you say that again with what you just said?
So this is a motion to deny. So if you vote in favor of the motion, you are voting in favor of a denial.
Okay. No. I want to change mine to no. I'm sorry. I want to change mine to no. I misunderstood the way you said it.
Thank you, Ms. Davis.
She made the second.
Right.
So, yeah, unusual, but not outside of structure.
All right.
I didn't understand what he was saying.
So we're changing it to no?
So Ms. Davis votes no.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Falvey?
Can I interject before Mr. Falvey?
Oh.
This is very confusing, and I've been doing this a long time. I think the very first time I came in here, I had one of these, and we sat for about a half an hour trying to figure out what yes and no meant. So again, the motion by Mr. Marsh is to deny. So if you vote yes, you are voting in favor of the motion to deny. If you vote no, you are voting against Mr. Marsh's motion, okay? So yes, Mr. Marsh wins. No, Mr. Marsh loses, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Baxter. Any need to start over? We good so far?
I think we're good so far.
Okay, we're gonna proceed. Mr. Falvey, please.
Mr. Baxter, I need a clarification. If the person seconded it, which is a yes vote, but yet when the vote is taken, it's a no vote, so is there a second?
Well, yes, you can second a motion and then vote against the motion. So, and let me give you the way it would normally go, is Ms. Davis seconds the motion to get it on the floor to have discussion. And then during the course of discussion, somebody convinces her that it was wrong, that she should have seconded it in the first place, and she votes against it. So it's okay, it's just that it's a procedural matter to get it moved forward to the vote.
I got you.
All right, we're good now?
Yes.
All right, Ms. Edgar.
Mr. Falvey?
No.
Mr. Finney?
No.
Mr. Hampton?
No.
Mr. Fox?
No.
Ms. Jones?
No.
Mr. Winters?
No.
Mr. Klingenfuss?
No.
Ms. Nassar?
No.
Ms. Walzer?
No.
Mr. Marsh?
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Edgar. So the motion to deny has failed on a vote of 12 to 1. Mr. Hampton, or Mr. Baxter, I'm sorry, we keep doing this, right? I need another cup of coffee. All right, come on over here. They'll let you run the show today. All right, so we're back into motion making, yes?
Someone can make another motion, either to approve or to deny at this point.
All right, guys, so the floor is open for motions. Mr. Hampton.
Referencing docket PZ-24-018, I make a motion to approve the waiver, mainly because it would be a hardship with this being zoned industrial to move forward with this, any use of this property, and I think the residential use is more fitting.
All right, Mr. Baxter.
Mr. Hampton, when you say the residential use is more fitting, is that based upon the fact that there is other residential use showing up in the I-2 zone that is depicted on the map right now?
Yes.
Do you add that to your motion?
I will.
You have an adequate motion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, gentlemen. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Winters? So for both the maker of the motion and the second, the proposed conditions of approval would be incorporated into your motion?
Yes, yes, sir.
Thank you, gentlemen. All right, discussion, commissioners? All right, seeing none, we will move into roll call vote. Ms. Edgar. All right, guys, just as clarification, this is a motion to approve. A vote to yes means yes. I'm not gonna digress.
Is this something like I was for it before I was against it?
You know, it's the fun house.
I'll go and have Gore's famous lines. Just asking.
All right, Ms. Edgar.
Mr. Finney?
Yes.
Ms. Kraus?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Elder?
Yes.
Mr. Hampton?
Yes.
Mr. Marsh?
No.
Ms. Nassar?
Yes.
Mr. Winters?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Falvey?
Yes.
Mr. Klingenfuss?
Yes.
Ms. Walzer?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Edgar. And the motion to approve the waiver, and it has passed on a vote of 12 to 1. All right, we'll prep for the next docket. Everybody good? Do we have a docket to read for this next item, Ms. Edgar? Okay, we're at that point.
Docket PZ-24-019, zoning text amendment creating section 250-065, medical cannabis facilities of the Oldham County Comprehensive zoning ordinance.
And, Mr. Fisher, you have staff's presentation?
Yes, I do.
Floor is yours.
So Ryan Fisher, Director, Oldham County Planning and Development. So this is for a proposed zoning text amendment to our Oldham County zoning regulations. This will be for a new section, creating section 250-065 regarding medical cannabis facilities. So this has been kind of a hot-button issue ever since the state legislature passed this and the governor signed it in to law. So these will take effect in January of next year. And so if we don't do anything as a county, we automatically get opted in to having medical cannabis facilities within our county. And so we'll go through this and kinda to see what's been proposed and look at the history behind all this legislation. So the outline for this lengthy presentation, but I'll try not to be too lengthy for you, is we're gonna start with looking at the history of the legislation and kinda how this came about within the state. After that, we'll look at kinda some nuts and bolts, meat and potatoes of the actual state law, the different types of licensing types that they're gonna have, and then we'll get into actually what our regulation says, starting with the intent, looking at some definitions. We'll look at all of those definitions, applicability, and then we'll get into really kinda the heart of the presentation, and that's gonna be what uses and what zoning districts medical cannabis will be allowed in, as well as other types of location restrictions that we have looked at over the course of this ordinance proposal. And then lastly, we'll look at the development plan requirements once somebody does come in and apply for a medical cannabis facility within Oldham County, what they'll be required to do. So that's gonna kinda be the outline of the presentation. So looking back at the beginning, Kentucky Senate Bill 47, known as SB 47, authorized the use of medical cannabis in Kentucky. That was passed by our state legislature on March 30th of- That was passed by our state legislature on March 30th of 2023. Governor Beshear signed that into law just a few days after that, on March 31st, 2023. And as I stated at the beginning, the provisions of this bill will become effective on January 1st of 2025. So I put this on here early because this is going to be something that'll come up or you'll hear about. This is just a reminder that cannabis consumption outside of the medical cannabis program remains illegal within the Commonwealth of Kentucky. Now, I can't predict the future. If that comes down the pike, like it has in many other states, that will be another regulation and another bill passed by the state. So this regulation, as well as the state regulation, only applies to the medicinal cannabis program, all right? So all local governments, including counties and cities, are automatically opted in to have cannabis business operations within their jurisdictions. So if we don't do anything by January 1st, 2025, they can locate, if they get a license to have medical cannabis, can locate within a county or a city if they don't do anything. So really, we can do three options, and that's point number five here, is that counties and cities can enact ordinances that establish restrictions and fees on cannabis business operations. It's essentially what we're looking at doing here today. The other option is they can choose to prohibit all cannabis business operations. And you'll see a couple here in a second on a slide, that there's a couple of locations within Oldham County that have already chosen to do that. And then we'll talk about some fiscal court action that had been proposed to also do that. The last option would be to put that resolution of the question of medical cannabis on the ballot. That last one, that timeframe has already passed to be able to do that. We'll also talk about that a little when we talk about previous fiscal court action. But that has passed, that deadline to be on that November ballot has passed. So really, it's kind of the option we're looking at today, or a prohibition, or it's going to be a free-for-all, really. So local governments and their regulations can establish restrictions on three things, time, place, and manner. And so that's really where these restrictions sort of look at hours of operation, where they can be located within a county, and then the manner in which they can operate. These regulations cannot be less restrictive than what the state law says. Local ordinances also cannot impose an undue burden or make cannabis business operations unreasonable. And then all local governments must choose to opt out of that automatically opted in by January 1st of 2025. So we're getting close to October, so if this does get approved today, it will go to fiscal court, where we'll have to have two readings. So just to kind of look at the timetable that we're in. If a county does prohibit all cannabis business operations, which isn't what this regulation today is doing, but if they can, a legislative body of a city, okay? So for instance, LaGrange, and we'll talk about what they're proposing here in a second, they can approve cannabis operations within their city. So Crestwood could, Peewee Valley could, if the county were to say, we're going to prohibit it. And then they can also enact resolutions taking that to a ballot as well, which none of them have done. And so looking at these different councils and cities that have done things, you'll see the two bottom ones there, Peewee Valley on September 4th, as well as Crestwood City Council on September 11th, both voted to prohibit all medical cannabis operations within their jurisdictions. So January 1st, 2025, nobody will be able to locate anywhere within the city of Crestwood or the city of Peewee Valley. LaGrange City Council was actually supposed to have their second reading in September, but because of an advertising snafu, their second reading will actually be October 7th. So their proposal is to allow medical cannabis operations within the city of LaGrange. They've got some other regulations that everything will have to go through a conditional use permit by the LaGrange Board of Adjustments. And then there's some other things, like it can't border a residential area, can't border a historic district, things of that nature. But other than that, if that ordinance passes in October, medical cannabis would be allowed within the city of LaGrange. And then lastly, Oldham County Fiscal Court action. We had two different motions come up within the course of us looking at these regulations from Oldham County Fiscal Court. The first one being on June 26, 2024, Magistrate Hawkins made a motion to prohibit all medical cannabis operations within the county. That motion did fail by a vote of 5 to 4. And then on August 6, she also brought up a resolution to place that question on the ballot, which also failed by a vote of 5 to 4. So if you think back to those three different things that we can do as a county, we've sort of looked at the first two, and so now here we are looking at a resolution and how we can kind of look at time, place, and manner restrictions. And then lastly, on kind of our process, at the same time that those motions were being made within fiscal court, we were also looking at this topic in our study review committee, which is a subcommittee of you all as the planning commission. So we met three times on this matter, starting in June, we met in July, and we met in August. Those meeting minutes are included within your staff packet. And you can see it was a pretty decent mix of local elected officials and then also, you know, concerned citizens that were in attendance, probably not as many as we would like in that process. But we did meet three times on that to kind of bring before you today what we're proposing as the regulation. Does anybody have any questions on the history of the legislation before I go any further? But if that's okay, if I ask.
Mr. Hampton?
I just want to be sure I understand on the, if the cities prohibit and the county okay's it, what are they going to do, put these places in the middle of a field somewhere? I'm a little confused.
Well, we'll have some slides here in a second that'll kind of look at the areas that you're talking about. So essentially, if we go through with this, you know, this proposed ordinance, it goes to fiscal court and passes, pretty much nothing would be allowed in Crestwood or Peewee Valley. If somebody comes in and says, I want to put medical cannabis here, and it's within the city of Crestwood, sorry, it's not a permitted use. If they come in anywhere within Oldham County, outside of the city of LaGrange, which is probably going to enact their own ordinances, then they would have to abide by this process, which we'll get into a little bit more, some restrictions, and then our GIS guru is going to come up and kind of show you really where we're talking about out in the county, so.
Thanks.
All right.
Mr. Falvey?
So when you say they can locate anywhere other than residential, so there is no zoning form, other than you can't go in a residential zone property?
Let me, you're talking about the LaGrange ordinance? Is that what you're asking about? Okay, let me pull that out, and I'll read it to you exactly how they have it written. And just keep in mind, this has not been passed yet, this is just their proposal. But theirs are, so section one is their cannabis business operations. They may be permitted to conduct business operations within the city of LaGrange as a conditional use. And then we get to the backside where their conditional use permits are. And no cannabis business operation shall be permitted on any residential property, nor on any commercial property contiguous with or across the street from any residential property, nor on any mixed-use property without a waiver of residential uses. And then they can't be permitted within 1,000 feet of any school or daycare, which is going to go off what the state has in their law, or the boundary of either historic district within city limits. And then they've got things on landscaping and parking, which we'll touch on later in ours as well. So that's really what theirs states right now.
Okay, what about industrial zoning? It didn't mention that.
It doesn't say anything at all about zoning classes, just that it can't border or be in a residential area.
In a commercial zoning.
Right.
But industrial zoning that is next to a residential zoning, you could put it in, right?
Well, if it's next.
It says "commercial."
This is true, so.
So they could.
It's the way it's written, I don't know if there's a legal opinion on that or not, but.
And keep in mind, I mean, the way the legislature wrote this, the legislature, in my estimation, they anticipated this conflict between the counties and the cities. And so if the county had chosen at the fiscal court meeting to prohibit the sale of cannabis, medical cannabis in the county, the city of LaGrange could still do it. I mean, they have the option. We can't stop that. Likewise, we can't impose on Crestwood or Peewee Valley that they have to allow it. I mean, they're allowed to make their own determination about it. So what, and I assume, and I may be wrong about this, but I assume Mr. Fisher has tried to assist the city of LaGrange in drafting their ordinance, because you guys are going to have some obligation to enforce it, right?
No, this was actually started before me, so Mr. Urban did that.
So Mr. Urban, so we can blame it on Mr. Urban. But the point is, is that, you know, there are going to be some things like that that come up. And, you know, you guys are being asked to enact an ordinance that is only applicable to the unincorporated portions of the county. You don't, this ordinance will have no bearing on what happens in LaGrange, nor would it have any bearing on Crestwood or Peewee Valley. And if they change their minds in the future and decided to allow a dispensary to exist inside Crestwood or Peewee Valley, our ordinance has no bearing on that either. So I know it's confusing how they've written it, but if you've got confusion about it when we get to ours, that's where we got to straighten that out, okay?
All right, other questions? Please, Ms. Kraus.
So in reading some of the minutes on those review committee, there was some kind of map that seemed to be helpful to show what areas they could do these various activities in. Are we going to be able to see that map?
I think we're coming to that as part of what staff put in front of us.
Thanks.
We're getting there.
All right, everybody good? All right, Mr. Fisher, back to you.
All right, so looking more at the state regulations. So they divided the state up into various different regions of counties, all in different numbers of county regions. We are in region 2. It's light blue on my map, I don't know what color it is on your TV screen. But you see that we are in a region with Bullet County, Henry County, Jefferson, Shelby, Spencer, and Trimble County. So each of those regions within Kentucky, and we'll talk about dispensary licenses, which is probably going to be the area of focus. All of those regions get four dispensary licenses per region, except for the two regions that have Jefferson County, because Louisville, and then Fayette County because of Lexington. Those two regions will actually get six licenses, but two of those licenses have to go to Jefferson County and Fayette County. So essentially, the other cluster of counties, for us being Bullet, Spencer, Shelby, Henry, Trimble, and us, get four dispensary licenses between all of those. And there's nothing really in the state law that says all six of them can't go to Jefferson County. It just says Jefferson County at least has to have two of them. So really, we're looking at those counties to be able to kind of look at four dispensary licenses initially. And you'll hear talk from people that this is initial, in two years, they may change this and give more licenses. But as of right now, that's what we will be issued, is four dispensary licenses to go within all of that county. And you can see some of the regions there, region 6 down in eastern Kentucky, there's 14 or 15 counties alone just in that region, and they've got four licenses between them. So very interesting how they came up with that. So that is our region, that's kind of what we're looking at with dispensary licenses. And this initial license availability slide, this shows you that dispensary number there, those number of initial licenses being 48. So if you went through all of those regions, four per each region, and then six in the two regions with the larger cities, that gives you that 48 number. So initially, there's 48 dispensary licenses to be issued within the state, and those are the places that you're actually going to go get the medical marijuana at. The other ones, you've got cultivator licenses, and then processor licenses as well. And then the last one is safety compliance facilities, which there's no limits on. Obviously, those are a less number of licenses on those cultivators and things like that. So the four license types, and I'll go back to this slide real quick, you can see producer is a zero. Initially, there's not going to be any producer licenses issued, so I'm not even going to really touch on that one right now because it doesn't pertain at this point. But the four business license types, so the first one being the cultivator, those are the ones that are going to be responsible for planting, raising, harvesting, trimming, and curing that raw plant material. And all of these two were highlighted, I put an information sheet in your staff packet, which sort of talks about each of these more in-depth. The second one is the processor, so they're going to take that raw material and then process and package that raw material into a usable product format. Then we've got the safety compliance facility, that they're looking for any contamination, purity testing, things like that, to make sure it's the right mixture of whatever it is they do in this process. And then the last part is the dispensary, the Walgreens, CVS of this whole operation. And they're going to be responsible for purchasing and selling that finished product to cardholders, people that actually have a license to be able to purchase medicinal cannabis within the state. And then these were the sheets that I provided you, I won't go over these in-depth during the presentation, but just looking at more in-depth on what those license types are. One thing that I was interested in seeing is if you look at on each of these sheets, the application fees alone are quite high. I mean, for somebody that works in government, that's high, it may not be for you all, but I look at that, and $5,000 for a non-refundable application fee for a handful of licenses are going to be divvied out. So that was kind of interesting to see. And so the initial cannabis business license period has closed. It opened in July, it closed August 31st, and you can see there, as of August 31st, there was 4,998 applications that were put in. Over 4,000 of those were for dispensary locations. There was only five for safety compliance facilities, and then you can see the numbers for the different cultivators as well. So with that being said, cha-ching, the state collected more than $27 million in licensing fees, and it said that nearly half of those applications were put in in the last four days of that application period. So the end of August was probably very fun to work at the Medical Cannabis Center in Frankfurt. So you can see that's quite the cash being brought in on just application fees alone. So with that, does anybody have any questions of any of those different license types that we may want to cover now, before I get too far down in the slides, before we get into actually what our regulation says?
Mr. Marsh?
Mr. Fisher, you mentioned Walgreens, CVS. Would one of the license, or the four licenses we're talking about, would they be a dispensary if this is a medical?
So you'll see that there's actually regulations of it being a standalone facility, so it would have to have its own special interest. And I don't know if Walgreens or CVS wants to get in that game or not, but it's got to be a complete standalone facility, the signage has to be minimized. So there's a lot of restrictions that go into medical cannabis. So I don't know if that's, you know, if they've applied for a license or not. I was just kind of using that generically to show you that this is the place where you're going to roll in and pick up your prescription, so.
All right, for the questions, Ms. Davis?
Yes. How would these licenses be issued with that few in this many counties? Who says, who gets a license, in which counties?
So you'll see, there is a letter that's in the back of your staff packet, which you can look at. So they're actually using the Kentucky Lottery to do the lottery. And there will be a lottery towards the end of October, which will actually pick the people that are the lucky winners of the medical cannabis facility. At least initially, that's how they're going to do that, so it's going to be a true lottery.
Who does that? The state?
The state. And then there is language within the statute that talks about if a county does restrict that location, they still have that license, but they've got to comply with whatever the county regulation is. So if a person who's applied for a license gets awarded one, we go through this process and end up, you know, approving this at fiscal court, and it becomes ordinance. If they don't comply with the section, they still have their license, but they have to find a location that is in compliance. And they all know that going into it, that's part of the language in the application with, for the license.
So it's possible Oldham County wouldn't get any anyway, I mean, with all these counties competing for them.
Yep, just like the lottery.
And if we got them, how many is the most we could get in a county?
So there's four licenses to go with all of, for all of those counties, so Trimble, Henry, Bullet. So there's nothing that says that all four of those can't come here, but I don't know if we're that lucky. That would mean we have a Powerball winner like every month.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Fox?
Of this 4,076 applications, do you have any numbers that's tell me are in our district or county?
No, we have no idea.
All right, any further questions? Okay.
All right, so now we get into our regulation, and I did provide you all a draft copy of that, so really, this part of the presentation is just going to follow right along with most of what is in our regulation. So it starts off with the intent, and the intent being that these regulations established are intended to ensure that any adverse effects that are created by medicinal cannabis facilities within our county are minimized and controlled, so as not to cause or contribute to any crime, increasing blight or downgrading of any adjacent property in a surrounding neighborhood, as well as restricting their proximity to other types of land uses. So some definitions, the definition for our regulation of medical cannabis facilities and provisions shall apply to three different things. One is the opening or commencement of a new medicinal cannabis business, the conversion of an existing business to any cannabis facility, so if somebody's operating a barber shop now, and they want to go to medical cannabis, this is going to pertain, and the addition to or the expansion of an existing cannabis, cannabis facility or relocation of one. So looking towards the future, if, if and when we get one, if they choose to relocate, this will also have to deal with those as well. So initially, when we started this ordinance process, we had a lot of definitions in our, in our ordinance, and, and through the course of study review committee, we said, you know what, all of these definitions are defined by the KRS. Every time, if, if something happens to change in the KRS, we have to go back and then change our regulation, let's don't do that, and so let's just reference the KRS for all the definitions, which is what we've sort of done. I'm going to go over a few of the definitions, which are going to kind of pertain and, and may shed light on, on any questions that you might have on the next few slides. So the first one being cannabis business, that is any entity that is licensed under this chapter as a cultivator, dispensary, processor, producer, or safety compliance facility. The enclosed locked facility, so those you're going to be looking at, the cultivators, that means an indoor growing space, such as a room, greenhouse, a building, or other indoor enclosed area that is maintained and operated by a cultivator or producer, and is equipped with locks and other security devices that permit access only by authorized agents of the cultivator or producer, as required by the cabinet. So all of those cultivators, this isn't just going to be an empty farm field with marijuana growing, growing in it. These are all going to be enclosed locked facilities, and there's all sorts of security measures that they have to comply with in, in being the cultivator. Medicinal cannabis definition means marijuana is defined in KRS 218A.010. When cultivated, harvested, processed, produced, transported, dispensed, distributed, sold, processed, or used in accordance with this chapter. Includes medicinal cannabis products as well as raw plant material, and does not include any industrial hemp or industrial hemp products as defined in KRS 260.850. Medicinal cannabis accessories, that means any equipment, product, or material of any kind, used, intended for use, or designed for use in the preparing, storing, using, or consuming medicinal cannabis in accordance with this chapter. Medicinal cannabis product, that's any compound, manufacturer, salt, derivative, mixture, or preparation of any part of the plant, its seeds, or its resin, or any compound, mixture, or preparation which contains any quantity of these substances when cultivated, harvested, processed, produced, transported, dispensed, distributed, sold, possessed, or used in accordance with this chapter. That's a handful. And then, I think one of the last ones here I talked about was qualifying medical condition. So the qualifying medical conditions is defined by the statute, including any type or form of cancer, regardless of stage, chronic severe intractable or debilitating pain, epilepsy, or any other intractable seizure disorder, multiple sclerosis, muscle spasms, or spasticity, chronic nausea, cyclical vomiting syndrome, post-traumatic stress disorder, and then any other medical condition or disease for which the Cannabis, Kentucky Center for Cannabis, blah, 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 I'll let you read all of that. So those are the qualifying medical conditions, is defined by the KRS. And then there are two more. Seedling, you'll hear that word, that's a medicinal cannabis plant that has no flowers and is not taller than eight inches. And then the use of medical cannabis includes the acquisition, administration, possession, transfer, transportation, or consumption of medicinal cannabis, or medicinal cannabis accessories by a cardholder in accordance with this chapter. And that does not include those things that I mentioned previously, such as the cultivation of, of the marijuana by a cardholder, which means if you have a card and you can go get medicinal cannabis, that means you can't go home and start your own grow operation in your basement or closet or anything like that. The use of consumption of marijuana by smoking, and the use of industrial hemp or those industrial hemp products. So those are the main definitions that I wanted to pull out of that KRS. The applicability is our next section. Uses regulated by the provision of this section shall here and after be designated as medical cannabis facilities, and shall be further defined as a medical facility, a medical cannabis facility, defined as a commercial establishment open to medical cannabis cardholders or their caretaker, which displays, distributes, issues, gives, provides, lends, transfers, transmits, circulates, disseminates, presents, exhibits, advertises, sells, rents, or leases a substantial or significant portion of its stock and trade, or characterized by the depiction of cannabis, or as such are herein defined. So, pretty much everything that could potentially be put in there was. Any medical cannabis facility open to the general public, which involves employees or customers who engage in conduct, which is distinguished or characterized by cannabis. And now we get into the uses in zoning districts, so where can this be located at in Oldham County? So what we've looked at is a medical cannabis facility located within the Oldham County limits shall only be allowed in the commercial zoning districts, the industrial zoning districts, and then kind of at the last study review committee meeting, we put in agricultural 2, which is our agricultural business district. Now, to my knowledge, there is no AG2-zoned property within the county, and that's according to Mr. Urban, and I don't know how many more months I can keep throwing him under the bus for things, but that is what he said. So, that would require rezoning, which we all know what process that takes in order to go to AG2. So, if and when that were to happen for any potential maybe cultivator that wants to go to agricultural business district, they would probably have to go through a zoning change in order to make that occur. So really, we're looking at all the commercial zonings and then the industrial, so I1, I2, and then IPD, which already pretty much says anything that's within commercial or industrial zoning can be done within the IPD, with the exception of, of several, you know, a few things within there. So, those are the uses we're looking at. These are going to be permitted only after the approval of a conditional use permit. So those all will require a conditional use permit with the appropriate Board of Adjustments, so in our case would be the Oldham County Board of Adjustments that would hear that conditional use permit to have medical cannabis in any of these zoning districts. So none of them would just be permitted by right, come in, get a license, and go to town. So that's kind of the way the regulation is wrote at this point. Going back to that slide showing you the business license type, you can see the different areas, the different zoning classes that certain types of business licenses will be allowed in. So once again, looking at the dispensary, those are all going to be commercially zoned spots that, as of now, those will be allowed in. And in the regulation, you can see that part in the, the black box there. And then other location restrictions, applicants for cannabis business licenses, so the state requires that they are not to be within 1,000 feet of an existing elementary school, secondary school, or daycare center. So I am going to try something here that I don't normally do, so hopefully I don't mess anything up. So this was on the Planning Commission site the other day, so the state has a zoning tool for anybody that is going to look for a medicinal cannabis facility with a map. And so, if you wanted to enter a medical cannabis facility, so let's just say we wanted to start one here at 100 West Jefferson Street in LaGrange, in case we wanted to do away with government and start down this route. So you can see right here, this location is not within 1,500 feet of a daycare center or school. So the state went with 1,500 feet, just to kind of give a little bit of a buffer there. The actual law says can't be within 1,000 feet of a school or daycare. So we can't go any less restrictive than that, so we at least have to have that within our regulations. Just for purposes, if we change this to 300 West Jefferson, with my apologies for whoever lives there, but you can see now in red, this potential site does not meet the established location criteria, one or more schools, and it actually tells you LaGrange Elementary School is within that buffer. If you zoom in, you'll start to see these rings around the schools. Those are those 1,500-foot buffers around all of, all of those schools and daycares that they potentially have on file with the state. So that's just a helpful tool for the state that they've put out there for anybody that does want to look at a license, they can go here first to see if they're going to be in compliance with what the state law says. Okay. So back to, back to our presentation, so that's, that's pretty much the only thing in the state law, 1,000 foot from any school or daycare. We, through the course of study review, have added a few other things in as far as location restrictions. One of them being 1,000 feet from any pre-existing cannabis, cannabis facility. So right now, that's not in play, because we don't have one, but the hopes of that would be vape shop, vape shop, vape shop, not into medicinal cannabis facility next door to another one, so 1,000 foot from an existing, a pre-existing medical cannabis, cannabis facility. The second one, 1,000 feet from any pre-existing religious institution. The third one, 1,000 feet of a pre-existing educational institution property, including daycare and childcare facilities, so that's consistent with what the state law says. The fourth one, 1,000 feet from any pre-existing library property. And then the last one, 1,000 feet of a pre-existing park property. The state law defines how you will measure that, and that measurement is from the property line to property line. So it's not front door, it's the property boundary of whatever it be here, whether it be a church, their property boundary to the property boundary of whoever's looking at doing medicinal cannabis. So the state defines on how we need to look at that, that measurement. So, you may be asking, so where can a can, a medical cannabis facility go now in the county? So at this point, I'm going to try something that we've never done before, and I'm going to have Matt Toler, who does our GIS come up and kind of interactively show you through our GIS technology on kind of where we're looking at, and I'll let him show his magic at, at this point.
Mr. Toler, did we get you sworn earlier?
Yeah.
Terrific, thank you.
Excellent. Well, good morning, commissioners, they let me out of the bunker today. So this is, we're just looking at pretty much the city limits of LaGrange, just to get an idea of where we are in the county. So here's City of LaGrange, Crestwood, Peewee Valley. So the main thing that we need to look at first is these colored shapes here are all the appropriate zonings that this, that these cannabis facilities can go into. So this is at, at the maximum of what or where these places can go. So, here's sort of like a little list, or a graphic of all the parcels that are falling between all of these zoning classifications that meet the criteria. So you can see that there's, they're sprinkled around, you know, the county, here's Ballardsville down here, Commerce Parkway. So, let's see what the next one will be. As Ryan was saying, that there's buffers between, these are all the school properties, that's 1,000 feet, 1,000 feet around all the schools within Oldham County. Here's some parks in the red, and then these are all the religious institutions. So when you look at these, since Crestwood and Peewee don't have any licenses to go into there, just to rest myself, okay, here we go. So you can see that, it's sort of hard to, and the orange is where all the medical facilities can be outside of all the city limits, Peewee Valley and Crestwood. The purple ones are excluding all the parks, and you can see that the numbers are keep getting smaller as to where these places can go. The blue are excluding all the cities, the parks, and the schools. And these yellow ones finally are the ones that meet all the criteria. So you can see, that's sort of a county lot. These are all the places that can actually be appropriate for all these cannabis locations. So, the majority of it is Commerce Parkway area, Buckner. And, you know, depending on what LaGrange says, you know, half of these might, or might not be, you know, suitable for any of these locations. Now, also keep in mind that out of all of these, I think that there was like 125, 150 of them that were vacant. So a lot of these properties are currently being used for something else. So, even though it might look like, you know, a decent amount of, you know, of land that's available, a lot of these are, you know, like Miller Lane here, these are all single-family homes. That was due to the tiered zoning that we had back when zoning was first coming to Oldham County. And like these, you know, another one out here in LaGrange, this is another tiered zoning, I mean, that's a subdivision, you're not going to have a dispensary or any kind of cultivation happening in any of these locations. Sort of gives you a better idea of all that language that Ryan was talking about, of just a visual of where these things can go. And as you can see, it's sort of a limited, a limited area throughout the entire county. Now, some of these, like, there are some, a little bit of anomalies, like Hermitage, wherever Hermitage is, let's look at that. They rezoned just the property, or just the area around Barn 8, so that whole 500 acres, uh, let me see which one we got here. So you can see like the prison lights up, just because one part of that is zoned appropriately, just like Hermitage is here. You can see that these, you know, there's a little thing on 42, like the, like the Goshen store, there's some stuff up by, you know, Victory Lane. But there really isn't a wide area or places for these things to, to go, that meet all the criteria that have been set in that, in the language that Ryan was talking about. And it's sort of an interactive map, you can type in an address, whatever address you want, you can, you know, sort of like... So if we go here in town, sort of give you an idea, so these are all the, the commercial properties are within LaGrange. But if you look, you start to see that the school, and in all these red circles are all the parks. So, pretty much most of LaGrange, even if they did pass it, will be within 1,000 feet of, of some kind of a park. So all of these shapes, you won't be able to, um, the majority of LaGrange, you're not going to be able to locate a, a dispensary or any kind of medical cannabis facility.
I just want to correct one thing real quick before. So City of LaGrange, the only thing that they're going to have is it can't border any sort of residential, so our regulations would include the parks, the churches, but once again-
But once again, whatever LaGrange does is what LaGrange does. So I just want to correct that real fast.
All right, guys. Questions for Mr. Toller? Ms. Kraus?
So if I understand this right, pardon me, it's kind of hard to follow. So anything that's in that yellow, that kind of goldish-yellow colors, those are where facilities could be. And primarily, it's along Commerce Parkway. And there's a little spot over by 42. But as far as Oldham County, where are the other major areas?
Yeah, so these yellow parcels that are highlighted are the ones that meet all the zoning requirements and the exclusionary around all the churches, schools, daycares, that kind of stuff.
So that long strip there that's going along 71, that's Commerce Parkway. What's this over to the right?
This?
Uh-huh. Yes.
That's off of, that's off of Blakemore, and some of the
But that's still in Oldham County?
Yep. All these are
But that's not a commercial zone. That, so keep in mind, and I want to be clear, you're talking about everywhere that one of the four categories of facilities could be located. So a cultivator, whatever, that's not necessarily where a dispensary could be located. That's where somebody could have a grow operation, for example. So I, you know, the dispensary would be, would be much more limited than what we're showing in the yellow, right?
Correct. Yeah. So what these, essentially what I did was if, these are all the zonings and will just the zone that it can actually physically be in. And while you see that this parcel is being highlighted here is because there's a little bit of this zoning that actually touches that parcel. So that's why it's being selected.
Right, but that's a, that's not, I mean, we're not going to have a dispensary out at Blakemore Lane, right? I mean, yeah.
So, but the yellow ones are the ones that at least meet the zoning to be able to do anything. Because they, at the very least, need to be, have a zone appropriate for all commercial and all industrial and the IPD. Or they would have to go in, in this case, they'd have to go out there and actually rezone it to one of those classifications.
So where are the other primary big yellow spots in Oldham?
I mean, there really isn't. I mean, there's a little bit down in, I mean, this is Ballardsville here. This is Centerfield. I mean, that's Buckner, that's Commerce Parkway. There's a couple here, right outside of Crestwood.
Okay. Thank you.
So not, I mean, it's not as many as you would, you would think. And some of these, like I said, are somewhat little outliers because along 42, there are like one or two parcels that have some kind of commercial zoning. And it just picks them up because it just says that, you know, they're zoned appropriately.
Thank you.
Okay. Further questions? All right. Mr. Toller, we appreciate it.
Perfect.
Mr. Fisher, back to you.
Yep, I'm going to close her out. So hopefully that at least gave you an idea of where we're looking at within the county that a medical cannabis facility could go, whether it's a cultivator, dispensary, whatever. So once somebody does meet all of that and they come into the office with their plan that they'll need to go to the appropriate Board of Adjustments for, for a conditional use permit, their development plan and application shall include discussion about access, parking, signage, landscaping, the dumpster location, and then the justification of their location, showing that they do meet all of those new setback requirements of what's in accordance with the state law, as well as what would be in accordance with our county regulation. In that development plan as well, there's going to be a special note to parking, which has to be consistent with our existing parking standards, as well as landscaping, if any landscaping requirements would be required for them. The last one that I'll touch on a little bit is the signage. And that is number six there in those development plan requirements on page two, where it talks about exterior signs located on the building shall conform to the requirements of our Division 290, which is our sign regulations. Such exterior signs shall not advertise either graphically or verbally, either by explicit or literal expression, connotation, or implied reference any specified cannabis activity as herein defined. No electronic reader boards, no changing message center signs. No display of goods, products, or services shall be visible from outside of the building. And all signage must be generic in nature and non-descriptive to cannabis, marijuana, weed, pot, or any other descriptive language that would insinuate cannabis. So those are additional things in addition to our sign regulations that they would have to comply with. And then lastly, the development plan also will talk about time. Is that the hours of operation are restricted? And the way this is worded is a little different. But they can't do anything from the hours of 8:00 PM to 6:00 AM, right? So their hours of operation can be 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM. And that includes any employee working, doing anything like that within the premises. And with that, I think that pretty much concludes the majority of what is in that regulation.
And before you sneak away, but there's two points here that I think are important. Number one is if, if there is no action taken to regulate, and we would fall under the existing zoning regulations, right? I mean, we, if we didn't do anything, they'd be permitted to, to have dispensaries in the county or cultivation or whatever. And, and you'd be trying to determine which pot, or for lack of a better term, that each of the operation would fall into. So you'd be going, okay, you've got a retail facility, it's a medical facility, and you would look to the zoning ordinance and try to find where it would be. Would it go in an office space? Would it go in a commercial, something like that? If we didn't regulate at all, right?
Correct.
The other thing that is important is that you mentioned early on that we can regulate, but we can't, for lack of a better term, over-regulate. We can't make it so unduly burdensome for them to operate that they can't operate at all. So you can't, I don't know how to hit the buttons, but you can't, you can't just make it so it's impossible. You couldn't say, for example, okay, you can't have a school within 10,000 yards of a facility. You can increase what the state regulation is, but you can't do it to a point that you make it impossible for somebody to operate, right?
Correct.
Okay. So those are things they need to keep in mind as they have a discussion about what you're proposing.
And on both of those questions, so that first one is when, when me and Jim Urban started talking about this way back in, you know, early in the calendar year of, you know, we needed to get this issue out there. I then went to a conference back in June or something, and they were like, if you haven't done anything now, you need to hurry and do it because that deadline is coming. One of my fears is every time somebody comes in and says, we want to locate, and this is the zoning, can we locate there? We obviously in our zoning regulations don't have every potential type of use listed. But it was like, well, medical cannabis, do we consider that an office facility? Because it's kind of like a doctor's office, you've got to have a card to go there. Do we consider it a commercial-type facility like a Walgreens or whatever? And I said, I would rather just have something that says, "Medical Cannabis", and it be listed in there because then you can go, "Medical Cannabis", you can do it in these zoning areas. So that was really kind of the reason behind wanting to get it specifically classified within zoning areas to say, "Medical Cannabis is here." The last point I wanted to make was, I will say, just for transparency purposes, within those three meetings of the Study Review Committee, the distances started at about 5,000 feet. I believe it was proposed to be 5,000 feet away from a lot of different things. Seen that corridors were in there. Over the course of those three months with the work of the Study Review Committee, that kind of got whittled down to the areas that we thought were most consistent, that we want to protect with a reasonable distance away. So we didn't just throw up 1,000 and get to that point. Over the course of the Study Review Committee, with the input of those members, as well as the people that were, that were at the meetings as well, kind of came up with, you know, those different locations, as well as the distance of 1,000 feet. So just to give you all that.
And one, back to your first point, oftentimes people come in and they have a use, and you get the book out, and you guys are flipping through. I know for a long time, we had a struggle with event venues because it wasn't specifically defined in the ordinance. And so people would come in and they'd say, "I want to have a wedding venue, and I want to do it on this particular piece of property." And, and you guys would struggle with whether or not it was a permitted use or not on that. And, you know, that's why, I mean, for meeting after meeting after meeting, we would go to the Board of Adjustments, and you would have these event venues showing up there. And people were trying to do one, want to do one on Peyton Lane, or I want to do one on this. And, and we were having that struggle. So you're trying to avoid having grappling with those issues. You just want somebody to walk in and say, "I want to, I want to locate a cultivation operation", and you say, "Okay, here's what you got to do", right?
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. So now, if I may, Mr. Fisher, right? This is a zoning text amendment, and it's a recommendation to whom?
Oldham County Fiscal Court.
And is it also to the other members of the planning unit?
The answer to that would be no.
Yeah.
Okay, because, well, I take that back. It is not a recommend, I don't, does anybody else? We have members from other, like the City of Goshen, for example, but they're subject to our ordinance regardless. So I think the answer is no, because Pee-wee Valley, Crestwood, and LaGrange have the opportunity to enact their own regulations if they were to have dispensaries or cultivation or whatever within the city limits. So I don't think we can tell them what to do.
Fair enough. So for what it's worth, guys, just wanted to point out, right? The path on this, where it goes, is to fiscal court, if you guys decide to approve and recommend moving it forward. That's one thing. Then the second is if we can revisit the timeline, Mr. Baxter. If it went through fiscal court, if it was recommended today to go to fiscal court, then what are their steps? And can you help us understand how that plays out in relation to December 31, as our timeline goes?
Sure. So we would have to have a publication, first reading and a second reading. The fiscal court obviously meets more regularly than you all do, so that, I don't think we have a timing issue necessarily. But for example, if you all decided you wanted to table this and think about it, and we go and we have a conversation about it in November, we're going to have a hard time getting something passed. And if it's not enacted by the first of the year, then it sort of becomes the Wild, Wild West as it relates to this. So I think, and, and the other thing, in fairness, you know, to, if somebody has a business plan and they want to do something, I mean, they're held up right now because they don't know what the rules are, right? So until you got, until something is enacted to tell them what the rules are, or nothing is enacted, they're, they're kind of in a holding pattern as well. I think you got the calendar up, and so our next meeting of the fiscal court is on the first. We're not going to be able to meet that because we've got an advertising issue. That, and are we going to, we may not be able to make the 15th, right?
Well, so normally the hearing notice is for the second reading, the public hearing. So my thoughts were is if it, you know, passes today, is getting it on for a first reading on October 15th. And then the public hearing being that November, is that Election Day?
That is Election Day.
Yeah.
So we, you know, we might be pushed to the 19th.
Yeah, we'll have to think about that one.
All right. So mission accomplished there. Thank you. All right. And then the next, right? So recommendations leave here and go to fiscal court. At which point, what can happen there? It can be edited, amended, so on and so forth. It can be denied. Or it can be, there can be any variety of changes made to it before it's enacted. So understand, this is a moving piece of text as you look at it. And it has that very real potential of seeing some modifications made if it's to be enacted at all. So just food for thought there, guys. Finally, all applications in this space, sequence and format and so forth, that's conditional use?
Correct.
Every single application for this comes under conditional use permit, which means public advertisement, public hearing for that particular application. So not just a little transparency goes along with every single application that would come through in this space.
And I'll notice that gets an adjoining property owner notification, so now the adjoiners know, you know.
All right. That's all I had. Thank you. Yes?
Ask a couple of questions, probably more for Barry than staff. But there's these areas where people cannot locate these things based on schools, maybe parks, whatever, whatever. What happens if somebody wants to come in later and build a preschool? Are they prohibited from building the preschool because the dispensary is already there?
No.
No?
No. But the fact that, that once the dispensary is there, if, if you want to build a daycare next door, that's fine, but that doesn't mean the dispensary's got to shut down, right? I mean, the dispensary, once they're in, they're in. So.
Okay. And second thing, I thought that we said that Crestwood and Pee-wee Valley had voted to not have any of these dispensaries?
Correct.
Can Oldham County not do that, Mr. Baxter? You said we couldn't make overregulation, but could we just recommend that the county not have dispensaries, period?
Well, the answer to that is the question was presented to the fiscal court, and fiscal court chose not to do that. So, and then the question was presented to fiscal court after, and I'm going to be, I try to be respectful here, but you know, Magistrate Hawkins presented that as an option to the fiscal court. The fiscal court, on a vote of five to four, defeated that request. Then Magistrate Hawkins, the next month, asked that the matter be put on the ballot in November, and again, the fiscal court defeated that five to four. So the court has spoken. The court has indicated that they will allow dispensaries within the county. So the question now is, is whether or not there's going to be regulation in the form of zoning, the zoning map amendments, or the zoning text amendment, excuse me, that would regulate that. If, if there is no zoning text amendment, then come January 1st, somebody comes in and makes application for a dispensary, and Mr. Fisher and his staff are flipping through the book, trying to figure out where they can be located. So, and at that point, if there wouldn't be any regulation, we are left, the default provision is with the state statutes. And that's, that's the only regulation that there would be on a dispensary.
All right. Further questions?
I do have one. So this lottery thing, I mean, it sounds like you don't know who has joined the lottery. And I'm assuming some of that is outside of this area. And if they won the lottery and couldn't do it where they wanted, you know, let's say it was Crestwood or, you know, someplace else out in the state. Are they able to lease? Like, let's say there's a property owner that doesn't want to sell their property, but are they able to lease that land to do something? Or does it have to be somebody that owns the property in Oldham County?
No, I think somebody would be able to lease property, sure. I mean, you know, it'd be like, no difference than a, than a fast food restaurant wants to locate on your piece of property. You want to, you enter into a long-term lease with them. The Walgreens out here in LaGrange does not own that property.
Mr. Baxter, does the application itself that these potential winners are looking to apply for not already require them to have a lease or a contingent lease?
I am not clear about that. I think that the lottery is for the license itself.
Okay.
And so once you, and keep in mind, you know, if, if I decided I wanted to open a dispensary, I have to go through a bunch of steps to even qualify to get in the lottery. It's not like, you know, somebody that we see, for example, in District not like, you know, somebody that we see, for example, in district court that gets charged with possession of marijuana, could decide that they want to operate a dispensary. They're going to have to go, and they're going to have to clear a background check. They're going to have to have, they're going to have to pay the money. There's a whole lot of hoops you got to jump through before you can be in a position to try to get the license. And, and once you get the license, then you have to be in a position to locate it somewhere. So, you know, I think when they come to Ryan, that, you know, they can't just be somebody who wants to do it. They have to be in a position to demonstrate that they can, and that they, that the state has said that they're an approved person to be able to locate the facility.
Thank you. All right. Questions? Barry?
Hi, Mr. Hampton. I just want to be sure I understand a couple of things. Number one, whatever we do, whether it's vote, whether we recommend this, or we do nothing, it still goes back to fiscal court. Is that right?
Mr. Baxter, if we do not take action, would it go to fiscal court?
It would not necessarily go to fiscal court. That does not prohibit one of the magistrates from introducing this, if you took no action, for example, one of the magistrates could ask that this be presented to the court, and the court could adopt it. I think that this is your opportunity to provide your input and guidance to the fiscal court.
But they don't have to take it.
They do not have to take it. Likewise, you don't have to recommend it.
Got it. That's what I wanted to, well, I'm not going to testify. Never mind.
All right. Further questions? All right. Ryan, you good?
I'm good.
Mr. Baxter, you good?
I am good.
All right.
I do have one letter of opposition that I said I would read in the record, but I'll wait until we get to that point and come back up and present it.
So, it's that point in time. Let's go ahead and move into that portion of this hearing.
So, I told this individual that I would, she was unable to be at the meeting today, so I'll put it on the overhead. Yeah, I'll read it. I'm going to read it.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll try to talk loud, so this mic can pick me up.
Okay.
So, "Dear Mr. Fisher and elected officials, I am writing to share my thoughts concerning the medical cannabis zoning that will be discussed at the meeting on Tuesday. First and foremost, I want to express my disappointment with the fiscal court for not allowing the issue of medical cannabis facilities to be voted on by the people. I appreciate Magistrate Hawkins for attempting to put this on the ballot, and I am thankful to those who supported her efforts. Not allowing this to be a community decision was a mistake. However, what's done is done, and we are now limited to having input on where these facilities can be located. My suggestions for the proposed zoning are as follows. 1,000 feet is not an acceptable distance. It needs to be much farther from areas where minors frequent. Please consider doubling the distance, at the very least. Can we also add residential to that section? On page two, number six, under Development Plan Requirements, I'd like the word "high" added. We should not allow any advertising that uses slogans and lingo associated with drug use. When I spoke on the issue at fiscal court a few weeks ago, I expressed my sincere desire to prevent medical cannabis from entering our county. My reasoning was that we already have issues controlling our current alcohol and tobacco products, and this would only compound that. You are now faced with making prudent decisions about where these facilities can be located to prevent further issues. I would greatly appreciate it if you could be proactive and limit these facilities to very specific places in order to protect our kids from being exposed to and influenced by this drug. Please keep my concerns in mind as you move this ordinance forward. Thank you for your hard work and service to our community. It is greatly appreciated. Sincerely, Lauren, Laura O'Brien."
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. All right.
Now, I think I'm done.
Okay, you're done. All right. Who else would like to speak in opposition to this item? As you approach the podium, gather your name and address. Get you sworn in, okay?
My name is Robin Vessels. My address is 1320 Bluegrass Parkway. I do live in LaGrange, Oldham County.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
I wanted to speak about a few definitions and terms within the proposed zoning ordinance. The state law says that allows for 1,000 feet of an existing, it has to be no closer than 1,000 feet of an existing elementary or secondary school. And your proposed ordinance has 1,000 feet from a pre-existing educational institution property. My question is, how is that different than an elementary or secondary school? Does it mean public, parochial, private schools? Does it also mean homeschool? I have looked for the definition of educational institution in your zoning ordinance, and there is no definition. Definitions can be found on pages 269 through 281. Page 260 also states, "In the event that a definition is not listed in this section or document, staff shall refer to a Planner's Dictionary published by the American Planning Association." So, I looked at a Planner's Dictionary for the definition of educational institution and found two definitions. The first is a definition from Pine Bluff, Arkansas, and says, "A public parochial or private institution that provides educational institution to students." The second definition is from Gurnee, Illinois, and says, "Any public, parochial, private charitable, or nonprofit school with or without living quarters, dining rooms, restaurants, heating plants, and other incidental facilities for students, teachers, and employees." While the Kentucky revised statute does allow you to be more restrictive, I think that your words should be more clear. Do you mean private schools, parochial schools, private schools, homeschools? Or maybe you should just use the same language that is in state law, which is existing elementary or secondary schools. Under applicability of the proposed ordinance, it states, quote, "A medical cannabis facility shall be defined as any commercial establishment that sells, rents, or leases a substantial or significant portion of its stock and trade, or is characterized by the depiction of cannabis." My question regarding this section is, what is the definition of substantial or significant portion? Does that mean 51%, 71%, 75%, 90%? And is that not in conflict with number three, that states, quote, "The medical cannabis business shall be a standalone business." Standalone is very different than a business that has an undefined substantial or significant portion. Doesn't standalone mean that's all we're going to sell? Substantial or significant portion leaves room for other items to be sold. In conclusion, I would request that some of the terms and conditions be modified before the commission votes on this. And while I did attend the last SRC meeting, and I do think the committee members worked very hard before bringing this before the full commission, I did, I had not researched in order to be able to discuss my concerns at that meeting. And that meeting was the last meeting before this, this morning's meeting, before the planning commission. So, I do apologize for not being prepared when I did go to the last SRC meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Vessels. Who else would like to speak? All right. Commissioners, questions for Ms. Vessels? Okay. Questions for staff, perhaps? So, can you give us an observation, a viewpoint on the recommendations just made by Ms. Vessels?
I mean, I'm okay with, with that language of changing it from pre-existing educational institution. I mean, it's my thinking, and I wasn't the first one to draft this, but educational institution pretty much incorporates everything, whether it's a college, whether it's a high school, secondary. The problem with a lot of homeschools is, we don't know where those are located. So, that would be one issue there. But, if this goes to the conditional use permit process through the Board of Adjustments, if there is, those neighbors are going to be notified at that point, so.
I'm not sure you can include homeschools, though, because, I mean, you're going to run into a problem. What is a homeschool? You're going to be defining that. There's going to be situations. I think that would be problematic.
Yeah.
I mean, that institution, to me, the term institution is a, more like a school, a college, you know, vocational school, something like that, that I think you would have difficulty. We would have, we'd get sued, is what I guess I would say.
All right. So, Mr. Baxter, do you have any feedback on the potential of incorporating definitions that might work better?
I mean, I understand Mr. Fisher's point. To me, that is broader than what the state has indicated.
Mm-hmm.
And allows, you know, if, for some reason, we had, I mean, I think we have in LaGrange, but if it was outside of LaGrange, a KYCT located somewhere down on Commerce, that would keep the dispensary from being able to locate within 1,000 yards of a KYTC college facility. You know, high school and grade school and, you know, a daycare facilities is less restrictive, in my opinion. But, you know, it's obviously up to you all about what you want to recommend.
All right. Questions, commissioners? No? Okay. All right. Mr. Finney, please.
You know, when we went through this in SRC, and we laid out the 1,000-foot radius from the dispensary, we picked up, I think, for instance, we took Southeast Christian Church and LaGrange Elementary, and we drew these 1,000-foot circles. And we were, we were basically surprised by how much territory, how many of these 1,000-foot circles took in. And it took, you started doing two or threes, two or three of these around LaGrange, and you encompassed most of LaGrange. I mean, you know, I always said, I always said we needed one more, one more place, and all of LaGrange would be eliminated, you know? And so, I mean, when you, when you really start looking at this on a map, 1,000-foot radius from an individual place, whatever it might be, an educational center, or a church, or a park, you can encompass a huge amount of property. And so, it's bigger than you realize. It really is. It surprised everybody how much area we were taking in and eliminating. So, it doesn't sound big, laid out on a map, start looking at these concentric circles, what they grab, and you have really encompassed a lot of property and eliminated a lot of property. So, it's, it's, it's a big piece of ground.
Thank you, Mr. Finney. Mr. Hampton?
Follow-up on Mr. Finney. But, LaGrange can still override that, if they vote for it, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Just wanted to be sure.
Correct. All right. Anyone else? All right. So, we're at this point where it's time to make decisions. Ms. Davis?
I'll make the motion.
Hang on one second, if you will, please, okay? So, and the first, first question is, you know, if you wish to make any modifications to definitions, now's the time. And it's okay with me if you do not decide to do so. Understanding full well, the next step, if recommended for moving forward, there remains that opportunity, okay? So, you have that opportunity as we speak. Mr. Marsh?
Mr. King, I have two suggestions for minor edits. Do those come after the motion or prior?
No, I think we need to get this into discussion now.
Okay.
So, let's go ahead and run through those.
On page one, zoning district and location, you mentioned the addition of AG2, but in the paragraph, it is not listed. Add that, please.
Yep. We've already got it in there.
Okay.
I noticed it the other night when I was doing the presentation.
Okay. And then, in page two, Development Plan Requirements, point number one, the last part of that sentence, "In justification that the medical cannabis facility located", maybe this is a question for Mr. Baxter, would, instead of justification, would it like confirmation? Or is that a legal term?
I'm sorry, where?
Page two, Development and Planning Requirements, point number one, the second half of the sentence, it talks about signage, landscaping, dumpster location, and justification that the medical cannabis facility is not located within. Instead of the word justification, would confirmation or something like that? I was confused when I read that. I don't know if that's a legal term.
No, I don't think it's a legal term. I think confirmation is probably a better term. So... So, thank you, sir. So, you're asking that, and what you're proposing is that when the applicant comes in, they confirm that they're not within the 1,000-foot setbacks? And they're, obviously, they're going to use the online calculator to try to do that, right?
Correct.
Yeah. So, would confirmation be acceptable to you?
Yeah, that's fine.
That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marsh. Anyone else? All right.
So, are we good on keeping the pre-existing educational institution property, rather than any other language there?
Commission, now's your chance. We're standing there.
Okay.
Okay.
And then the other recommendation Ms. Vessels brought up was language, I didn't hear the first part of it, but it was about whether or not that conflicts with something we said later on. I don't...
Ms. Vessels, can you, can you come back to the podium, please?
What I had said was that the proposed ordinance says, "A medical cannabis facility shall be defined as any commercial establishment that sells, rents, or leases a substantial or significant portion of its stock and trade, or is characterized by the depiction of cannabis." And my question regarding that section was, what is the definition of substantial or significant portion? Does that mean 51%, 75%, 90%? And I also asked, was that not in conflict with number three, that states, quote, "The medical cannabis business shall be a standalone business"? Standalone is very different than a business that has an undefined, quote, "substantial or significant portion." And doesn't standalone mean that's all we're going to sell?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. So, discussion on this, guys, right?
Well, Mr. Fisher, standalone, is that the same as freestanding?
Well, we talked a lot about this in SRC, and the state statute doesn't really define that. So, where, we took that to be was, that's all they can sell out of there, is medicinal cannabis. So, they can't go, "Well, we're going to cut hair right here, and over here, I'm going to sell the medical cannabis." It has to be standalone in nature, not necessarily freestanding, because I know some have looked at strip mall locations in, within the city of LaGrange. And so, that kind of came up, that question of, can they operate it within a strip mall? Because that's not standalone. And so, standalone, we take that to mean is, that's the only...
And both of these definitions, you're getting from chapter 218B, right?
Correct.
So...
Why don't we?
You have, you have adopted, so that there, so, for example, if the state's definition changed of something, then we don't have to amend the ordinance to change it?
Correct.
Okay. And... And the other component of this, I guess, that sort of goes to that, is that my understanding of the state statute is, we're not talking about a substance that is smoked, right? I mean, this is, some other way it has to be ingested. So it's not like we're talking about having...
I do not want to testify with that. I don't know either.
I think that's correct. And so what my point is, is it's like, we're not talking about them being able to sell a bong, for example, or a pipe, or whatever, because that's not the way, and I'm going to testify, I guess, because Representative Nemus came in and talked to the fiscal court about the specific restrictions, and that is one of the things, it's not going to be leaf sold for the purpose of smoking, right?
Right. And on the last page of the draft, there's conditions and standards, which I didn't go through on the PowerPoint, but it specifically mentions all of those products, bongs, pipes.
Mr. Baxter?
Yes.
I believe the presentation showed the delivery methods for medical cannabis, and smoking is not one of those. Vaping is as close as it gets.
Correct.
So, everyone on the commission knows, we've been back and forth a number of times about trying to apply definition language that is separate from the state statute. And then the risk of having the state change that, and you're either left with a more or less restrictive type of definition on the local level, and that conflict and the adventure it represents in conflict. And accordingly, we have found ourselves refuge more likely in the state definition when it comes to definitions, how we landed there, okay? All right, anything else? Anyone? Decision time. Mr. Fisher, a little framework?
Well, I didn't present your typical staff packet that has already made up motions to approve or deny on this, but this would be asking for a recommendation of approval to Oldham County Fiscal Court for the zoning text amendment, section 250-065.
All right, Mr. Baxter, anything to add?
The only thing to add, Mr. Chairman, is I would assume that you're asking for a recommendation of approval with the addition of AG2 that Mr. Marsh noted under zoning district and location, and changing the word from justification to confirmation on page two, under Development Plan Regulations, paragraph number one.
That's exactly what I meant.
Thank you.
All right. Who would like to bring a motion to the floor? Ms. Davis?
I'll make a motion to approve Docket PG-24-019, the zoning text amendment created in section 250 through 2065, medical cannabis facilities of the Oldham County Comprisance of zoning ordinance. And should I include those?
I think that's adequate. I don't think we need...
Changes articulated by Mr. Baxter, thank you. All right, we have a motion on the floor, Mr. Baxter.
That's an adequate motion for this purpose, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you much. I have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second? Do you wish to second?
Did we have a second?
Not yet.
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Elder, thank you. All right, discussion.
I gotta head and miss that, sorry.
All right. Do you have something to add, Mr. Marsh? Okay. Okay. All right, commissioners, discussion? All right, we will move into roll call vote.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Marsh?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Falvey?
Yes.
Mr. Elder?
Yes.
Ms. Walzer?
Yes.
Mr. Klingenfuss?
Yes.
Ms. Nasser?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Winters?
Yes.
Mr. Hampton?
No.
Ms. Kraus?
Yes.
Mr. Finney?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Edgar. And the motion to approve recommendation to Oldham Fiscal Court, PG-24-019, is approved on a vote of 12 to 1. All right, Mr. Fisher?
All right, one last thing. I know typically when individuals attend outside training, we approve that with the board, and I know we had several individuals attend the Kipta training a few weeks ago, and that included Mr. King, Mr. Marsh, Ms. Jones, Mr. Fox, Mr. Douglas, Ms. Kraus, and Mr. Klingenfuss. I believe that's all. Did I miss anybody?
I believe you got them all, sir.
I believe I got them all. So we just asked that you approve the training for them that they attended at Kipta in accordance with KRS. It tells them they've got to get eight hours every two years.
We'll do this by voice vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Hampton? And opposed, like, son?
But I have something...
What else had you? Oh.
I was wondering the way this was done, presented. No, where this was presented. It looks to me like we ought to get an hour continuing to add just because of this.
Is that a motion you'd like to make?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Fair enough.
All right. We have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second? We have a motion and a second, discussion? All right. Again, by voice vote, we can accommodate under these circumstances. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. And opposed, like, son? And thank you, Mr. Hampton. I'm one hour closer to my goal. All right.
And then our filing deadline has already passed. We do have cases for next month, so October 22nd is that meeting date. That's all I've got.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. All right, guys, we will stand adjourned.